Here, I think we can get started and then as people trail in, that will be fine. So you're all in the right place for our virtual town hall meeting regarding the Carmichael Parks and Recreation Master Plan update. And with that next slide, and I'm to turn it over to Mike for brief introductions.
Thank you, Lynda. I appreciate it. Thank you all for being here tonight. My name is Mike Blondino. I'm the District Administrator with Carmichael Recreation Park District. Tonight, the staff with us is Elena Loftus, who is our Recreation Services Manager, Ingrid Penny, who is our Administrative Services Manager, and also James Perry, our Parks and Maintenance Services Manager. So we're here to listen and we're thrilled that this process is happening and so many people have joined us. So thank you for taking the time.
And I'm Lynda Gates with Gates and Associates. We've been retained by the district to help with this Park and Recreation Master Plan update. Our firm's mission is to get people outside. So you imagine how fun it is for us. We get to look at a whole city and help figure out how to get all of you outside. I'm joined tonight by Melanie Sullivan and Kelly Gates are working behind the scenes to make sure that all the production goes right and that we can respond to your questions. So what are we doing tonight? We are hoping to gather input on your priorities for the enhancement of the Carmichael Park system. You know, over the last month, we've gone to sites and talked to a lot of people and had a lot of ideas about what people want to see. But we'd really like to understand what you want to see most so the staff knows where really to invest their resources. The agenda tonight is really just share with you a little bit some of our efforts today. And then we're going to open a community discussion about some of the things we heard and priorities and such, and then close with some next steps. So let's get started, Kelly. So we had a question early on. If during the presentation, you have a question at the bottom of your screen, if you move your mouse, there's a Q and A and you can type a question to that. You know, if you don't understand something and people will be monitoring that. There's also an opportunity for you to raise your hand if you want to speak. And so as we go through the process, though, there'll also be a number of polls that you'll be able to participate into. So and if anybody has a question about just how to even make Zoom protocols, you can send a quick question to Melanie and she'll help you out, okay? Because we really want to make sure technology is an opportunity, not a, it's inclusive, not a barrier for your participation. Next slide.
Lynda, we have a hand raised already.
Oh, good.
Were questions or allow hand raises throughout the presentation?
Why don't we try this out? Somebody has a hand raised right now.
Okay, Lynn Hall, I'm going to go ahead and allow you to talk. You can unmute yourself.
Just testing.
Okay, okay.
New computer, new computer.
Okay, all right. So probably right now, I'm going to run through the presentations. Unless it's really an emergency, don't raise your hand. You want to type some of the Q and A and then we'll start raising our hands once we get through the presentation, okay? But we'll all be geniuses with Zoom by the time we're done, okay? One of the things I want to share with you too is we have currently over 100 people on this call at the same time. I think you guys deserve a clap because that is a great participation in a virtual meeting. Fantastic. So what is a Rec Park and Recreation's master plan? I mean, what are we doing? So it's a strategic document that studies your existing park system. So we went out and looked at all your existing parks and then we work with the community to identify your needs and then create a framework that then this district will use over the next 10 years to sort of manage the park system. So it says that you kind of do this once every 10 years, kind of do a reset. So there's, you may or may not know, there's 13 parks in the district. Hopefully, you will take the challenge during the COVID period to visit as many as you can because they're all unique and different. Next slide. So we're really curious. I mean, we've gotten 100, over 100 people participating. We, and the district loves to communicate with their customers. And so we're curious about how you heard about this meeting tonight. And so there's me, a quick poll. Did you hear about it, you know, through Facebook or Instagram? There was a wonderful article in the Carmel Times. So you can just click all that applies. So you just take your mouse and go down and click all the ways that you heard about it, or if they only heard about it one way. I personally was at the farmer's market, so hopefully you saw me there and that's why you're here. No, I'm just kidding. But we really want to know the best ways to communicate with you. So if you want to go ahead now and you, and just click on all that apply for you. I know some people got postcards, maybe you saw a sign at the side, maybe a friend shared with you this. So how are we doing, Kelly?
We have 85 people of 100 who voted, so a couple of seconds more here.
Yeah, so come on. Everybody can try it.
Almost there, almost everyone.
Postcards are an option if you scroll down in the poll. I see that question popping up.
Yeah, slide down.
Also, the new pickleball club informed their members. Oh, thank you. We love it when you guys share.
Yes, that's definitely from a friend, our many friends. Thank you, that's other.
All right.
Okay.
More seconds, guys, get your answer in. All right. Here are results.
Drumroll. Okay, so this is pretty interesting. Look at signage of the park worked really well and so did the postcard. Darn, the farmer's market was not the winner, darn. But this is great and the district wants to use this information because they want to put, you know, it obviously works to invest in postcards and such like that. So thank you. And this was, this is kind of very heartening to see so many channels working. Next slide. So obviously, you're curious like, well, how long is this master plan going to take to do? And so we, now in January, February, we've been, we started in 2020 doing some of the initial reconnaissance. And now in January, February, we've been meeting with focus groups and we're having this community town hall and other kinds of things, getting community input. We'll then take that and through March and April, coming up with some draft recommendations and then go out to the public again in May and June with some of those recommendations to get your thoughts on them, hoping to develop a plan by summer. So that's kind of the process that we'll be moving through. So you can kind of say, hmm, whatever happened to? So give you that heads up as we go through. Next slide. So as I mentioned, so what have we been doing behind the scenes? We went and visited all the 13 parks and we inventoried the amenities there. We looked at what condition things were in. So we, we had a sense of the conditions today. You know, what you have, what's in good condition, what the district has to work on. So that's one of the things we've been doing. Next slide. We also held an online survey, which maybe many of you participated because we had like over 800 responses, well, 730 they're saying, responses to the survey. So that's one of the ways we collected a lot of information. We had a pop-up booth at the farmer's market. So we've just been finding out what people think about the existing park system and what kinds of improvements they'd like to see. I have to tell you, that's a great interest in taking the survey was wonderful and people had very much appreciation for the parks districts' efforts in the park system. It's really interesting because we've been doing this during COVID and I think it just shows you how important parks are when, for our mental and physical health at this time. Next slide. So some of the things we learned from that survey was that water play is still a priority for residents. And you know, it's hot in Carmichael and a lot of people would really like to see a pool for, you know, learn to swim, lap swimming, et cetera. But there was also some interest in sort of water play that maybe didn't involve a pool. So there you see like a splash pad below where there's no standing water. It's just kids can get wet. So both of those things received a lot of interest. So clearly, addressing water play is a high priority for Carmichael. Next slide. It was really interesting, too. Passive uses showed up pretty high, like botanical gardens, community gardens, butterfly gardens, nature areas. All those were seen as very important and reflect sort of a value that the Carmichael community has about, you know, engagement with nature. So that was pretty interesting to us. Next slide. And shade, shade being a priority, probably not a surprise to people, but the idea that we need to provide more shade so we can linger longer in our parks. So this was a high priority. There were a number of the things that came out of the survey, but these were some things that sort of rose to the top as a lot of people identifying as needs.
Lynda, can we answer a couple of questions about the survey?
Yeah, I just roll. Okay, let's do some questions here for a minute.
They're written in, so I'll just read aloud. Is it possible to still take the online survey?
The survey is not live anymore. But there will be other things as we go through the process, you'll be able to participate in. But that survey is not live anymore.
And then the next question is, who got the survey?
It was on the website, so it was available to everyone to take the survey. Maybe some people didn't know about that and that's one of the things we're trying to make sure we find out how to let people know about things. But we did have 700 plus people take it, which was a nice, like, not everyone has to take it to get a sampling of the community.
Will there, will we at some time be able to view all the results from the survey? I can answer that one. Yes, they will be, we'll see some of it tonight and then they'll be posted on the Park, Parks Plan website. So we'll share that at the end as well.
There's a link and you can go check, visit that. And then let's see.
That's all for the, okay. There's a question, what was the stats on the skate park from the survey? We previously had a skate park at La Sierra, which was removed and the promise of a future skate park at Carmichael Park in the original master plan. Wherein, what is the status of that?
And that is actually one of the questions that we're going to be asking people tonight in terms of priorities. And let's see.
Okay.
We also have a hand raised. Sam Fast, would you still like to speak? Permission. Unmute yourself. Lori, we already see, raise your hand, you can go next. Sam, are you still, did you still have a question? All right, Jane Sagehorn, do you have a question? I'm going to go ahead and allow you to talk. And unmute yourself. Jane? Oh, Sam, are you there?
I would like to wait till later, thank you.
Okay.
All right. I see there's a number of their questions and some of them very specific about a specific park. So let me finish this whole thing and then we'll get to some of those, you know, sort of the high level. Because maybe the answers to similar questions will occur as we go through the presentation, okay? But they're all there recorded and we will answer them, don't worry. Okay, next slide. So we also had some focus group discussions based on the survey. Some issues came up. We've met with some representatives of forest groups, some representatives of youth teens to kind of find out what they seek in parks, some newer residents to the communities and families, what they're seeking in parks, and some of the people interested in the aquatic uses. So we met with those and they gave us some valuable background and insights. But it led us to feel we really needed to go out to the community and get a pulse on what the community at large feels are the priorities for what the park district should be tackling over the next 10 years. Next slide. So we'd like to discuss with you sort of some specific topics, like the idea of water play. A high priority in the community, how should the district be looking to meet the water play needs? Improvements to the existing parks and there were a number of enhancements to existing parks. People mentioned like shade and such. How important are those? Like, how would you rank them in terms of prioritization? There are also a number of planned improvements. Somebody mentioned skate park, like at Carmichael and stuff, that have not yet been built. What, how should we prioritize those? And finally, some emerging needs, new things like pickleball and bike parks and such. And how does that play in? Because once again, there's a long wish list and now because of the desire to find out, you know, in what order they need to tackle things so that they're meeting the most pressing needs of the community. So next slide. So as I mentioned, water play has been on Carmichael's mind for a long time. When the last master plan was done in 2008, there was the idea that you needed an aquatic center at that time. Aquatic centers usually has like a lap pool or, you know, and a learn to swim pool and a recreational pool and such like that. So at that time, people recognized that there was a high desire to have aquatic center in Carmichael, such that when the Carmichael Park Master Plan was done, then in 2011, there, in the plan for the Carmichael Park was an aquatic center located sort of opposite of the tennis courts below the veteran, by the Veterans Memorial. So as you can see on the attached slide, so an aquatic center was planned, but that was in 2008. Next slide. In recent years, to sort of meet some of the recreation water needs of the community, the district has been working with the Dart Sacramento to provide like learn to swim lessons and such. And and this is, you know, bi-weekly 30-minute sessions at the American River College. They have a good ratio and it's a low cost to the district. So they were able to, through scholarships and such, make this available to the Carmichael community to close the gap on some of the swimming needs that we had. They also put in a misting stick at O'Donnell Park so that you kind of got some of that water spray and being able to play with water and sort of meet some of the water play needs. So these are some strategies that they've been using to sort of close this gap. So next slide. So there are some other things that they could be looking at. You know, there's a lot of people talking about having a big, huge spray park. You know, maybe not building a pool, just building a big spray park. Or maybe having little splash pads where you have one or two elements in a bunch of different parks. So you have water in a bunch of different parks. That's another way to meet some of the water play needs in the community. Next slide. So the question is, obviously, an aquatic facility with a pool is relatively expensive, but was, has been on the minds of the Carmichael community for over a decade. We could look at maybe putting in a big splash park at Carmichael that, you know, sort of allows water play, but maybe doesn't have, wouldn't satisfy the learn to swim and it, but it doesn't have maybe some of the same maintenance and commitments and it certainly is not as costly to build. We could look at some smaller splash, splash pads, splash pads, distributed through a number of parks so that we kind of spread the water play around. And we can look at continuing this Dart partnership, which is not very expensive to the district, to sort of fill that gap in learning to swim, learning to play. So one of the things we really would like to know is which of these options do you think the district should be focused, its efforts on? And it could be multiple things. You might say, you know, you should be doing the Dart, but still continuing to look at building a pool or do the Dart and the big spray park or something like that. But get a sense of where, what people think is the best way to meet Carmichael's park water play needs. So I'm going to throw that out to just chat about it right, to vote on it right now. And then we're going to chat about the results after we find out from people. So same process, vote on it and we'll see what's emerging and then kind of have a discussion about that. So how are we doing on voting there, Cal?
Yeah, 80, we're up to 85% have voted. So we'll just give, well, you can vote for more than one. So just a few more seconds, guys, get your votes in.
Jasmine is not able to vote. Are there other panelists who are having a problem?
Or members, not just people.
A palace, participants.
All right, we'll give five more seconds. Someone else could only choose one. Is everyone else feeling, was only allowed to choose one?
Okay, so this is interesting. It looks like a lot of people applaud the district's efforts in creating that Dart partnership to solve that need and maybe are interested in sort of something smaller that could be built in a number of parks. Is there anyone who voted for one option or the other option that would like to raise their hand and sort of share their thinking on it for a moment?
I just want to clarify a couple of things that are coming in the question so people understand.
All right, good.
So yes, to answer Dave, Dave's question, it's supposed to be $3 million per splash pad. So each dollar sign is a million. So a smaller splash pad is around $3 million upfront construction costs.
And you might be able to do something less costly. Often, splash pads are associated with needing a restroom nearby and a filtration system and such like that. And so it's not, we're not quoting dollars, but we're telling the relative scales of things. And so, and I think you all can, can everybody see the chat discussion that's going on? Okay, so people can see that. We have a number of questions that sort of built up. Maybe we should sort of clear some of these out before we go on to the next series of poll questions.
Let's answer the overarching one still again. So is this a new plan starting in 2021? Do you want to explain how a master plan process works and how it works for planning?
So we, so we developed this Park and Recreation Master Plan, which is a blueprint of priorities over the next 10 years. Then as each park, you know, like depending on the priorities, as each park has improvements undertaken, there'll be outreach done specific to that park. Like if we decide we want to add a path over here and a pickleball court over there or something else, there'd be a specific plan developed for that park. So it's not like we create this plan and you immediately start implementing off the plan. It's really trying to set prioritizations for working over the next 10 years and how we tackle sort of all the needs.
All right. Let's see, hold on here. Maybe someone from the district can answer this because we're talking about the water play. Does the Carmel Park District, I'm sorry, Carmichael Park District have a California-certified water treatment operator for chlorination and filtration?
No, we do not. We don't have a pool, so we do not have anybody on staff currently that can do that.
Thank you. If that, but you would have some staffing that would have to happen. We do add some of these water features, there are some maintenance commitments to that.
Yeah, and you make a very strong point. There's a dollar signs of how much to build it. It's going to be more dollar signs on how to maintain it and the staff, the proper staff to be able to do that.
And then one more on this one. Lynda, maybe you can briefly go over the differences between a splash pad versus a park?
Well, so a splash park tends to, in most communities, they build it like one, like you could see on this slide, like there's a bunch of kids there. It's like a destination with lots of water features, you know, people climbing up. It's like, it's like a play, a big playground with water. Where a splash, splash pad typically is one or two items that sort of kids play in and it's much smaller in scale. So it's just really kind of scaled down and not the same kind of destination draw. Thank you.
We also have a few people with their hand raised. And watch, we are able to see the chat in the Q and A. The Q and A lets us mark which questions we've answered. So it's easier for us to track things if you ask them in the Q and A, but we can still read the chat. I hope that helps.
We're monitoring both.
Right.
All right, Sam Fast, we're going to unmute you because you've had your hand raised for a while. If you still have your question, you're allowed to speak now. Hello, we can hear you. Sam? Okay, we will see if you come back online. And then Jane, you've had your hand raised for a while. If you're ready, Jane Sagehorn, I can unmute you.
Yes, I, I'm sorry, I didn't intend to do that. I'd like to answer my question later.
Okay.
So there's a number of questions here still that are sort of related to water. Do we want to answer these right now? Melanie, can you just run through all the ones that are about the pool? And then other people have questions about other topics we're going to be getting to later in the presentation.
Yeah, let's, let's answer them. Mike, this one might be for you. Will Sack County support the expense of a pool or splash park?
Will Sack County? No, we're, you know, we'd have to look for partners to do this, maybe Sack County. But this district doesn't have the funding currently. And there'll be, there'll be an explanation of funding towards the end and then a question there. But being a dependent district to the county, we have some resources. We certainly have a supervisor who will listen to us. But at this point, our funding that we have currently, yeah, we, we can't build a, and you know, I, whatever the figure of the pool, whether it's $10 million or $20 million, we don't have the funding for that at this point.
Okay, so are there any other ones directly related to water play? Because we'll just, we'll keep going through the whole thing. We can come back to any topic, but I want to make sure that.
Yeah, so another one from David is, I would assume the size matters. You could have a smaller splash park for less money.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Are the dollars for, this is from Brenda, for the splash park versus pad accurate in ratios? Do we only get two pads for one park?
This is, just to get an idea of direction and order of magnitude, this is not meant to quote exactly what some things cost, but just an idea of that kind of thing. Because I don't like somebody to ask me to pick something when I don't know what it's going to cost me.
And then let's do what happens, this is from Mia. What happens during inevitable drought years when it comes to a splash pad park?
They're set up, they're set up to try and use water as efficiently as possible and limited, but it is an issue, you know, when you have, you know, water is a valuable commodity. You limit the hours or you, you know, turn it off during certain periods. It, same thing with pools or any, any kind of water play. It's an expensive thing, but it's, it's a special thing, too.
Yeah, Lynda's spot, Lynda's spot on with that. I worked for a place that we had a splash pad and we had to limit the hours and the days and that helped us cut, but we didn't, we did not turn the splash park or the splash pad off completely.
So if, what I'd like to do is kind of continue on and, because I see a number of questions about topics we're going to cover later on. So, so the next thing is, and in the survey, and a lot of people had suggested improvements to existing parks. I mean, and I'm seeing even the question answers, people are saying we really should be focusing our efforts on maintaining and just improving what we have as opposed to building a lot of new facilities. So these were some ideas that people had about things that they thought we should do to existing parks. As I mentioned before, a lot of people wanted to see more shade in the parks. The sports groups would like to see a little bit of the turf improved and some improvements so that it's safer to play on some of the sports fields, some of the playgrounds, getting them updated so that they're kind of get a refresh and sort of interesting, new kind of play equipment. Interest in maybe taking some of the lawns and underutilized turf areas and converting them to native plantings and stuff, reducing water needs and maybe adding more interest into parks. And then finally, in both the survey and in some of the discussion groups, a lot of people had interest in sort of multi-use paths. There's a lot of parks that just by adding some more paths, we might be able to enjoy and access more of the parks and that walking was a, a great thing that a lot of people like to do or ride their scooters or such like that. So I'm wondering, in terms of some of the improvements to the existing parks that are just sort of enhancing. just sort of enhancements and kind of deferred maintenance issues, how would you prioritize these? So there's going to be a poll here and you can, what I'd like you to do is pick the things that you think are very important. You probably think all these things need to happen and you can select as many as you want, but think about the things that you really think the district should be prioritizing. So I'm going to give you a few minutes to comment on that. And if you want to write in other, that there's something else you think they should prioritize in the existing parks, then please feel free to share that.
I just want to quickly answer what a multi-use path is that came up. So it's a wider path that multiple people or uses can use at the same time. So you could have someone on a bike, go by someone walking or someone on skates, go by someone jogging, walking a dog, riding a bike, so that it's, you know, wider than your kind of standard four or five foot sidewalk, maybe eight to 10 feet wide.
They're saying the other option doesn't add the ability to, and a text, if you want to, in the chat box, if you have another, like mention those, then converting plant, oh my goodness, Kelly, we left off the turf to native plantings, not in the poll.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay, so if, if you're interested in that, just check your other and we'll see where that goes. So if you're interested in that, converting turf, check the other. And if you have some other idea, you can just check it in the polls. I'm seeing things like lights at Jan Park and such like that. Lot of support for native planting. By the way, all the, this meeting is being recorded and the chats and the questions and stuff are being recorded, so we'll have time to digest all this information because a lot of great ideas are coming in here. So how are we doing on the poll, Kelly?
We're at 92%. I realize some people can walk away from their computer, so you might not always get 100% participation. Let's give like a count of five, guys, and then we'll close it.
Okay. Oh, so your pitch for pathways there, Melanie. A lot of people pathways and shade structures. So that's, that's very interesting for the district to know. And I think adding some pathways does allow you to take advantage of the existing parks that you have, maybe to a greater level. And I believe that there's a, some, a lot of support in the other for that turf.
The native plants. A lot of people are writing in the chat that they already selected and would have selected that, so we'll note that that would be higher.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's some improvements to the existing parks. So now, and we're going to come back to all these as we go through. So now I want to talk to you with the next slide that you have undertaken to do a couple master plans in the, in the past. In Carmichael Park, we have plans to add a pavilion over in that area where the farmer's market takes place, you know, add additional parking, sort of adjust the location and upgrade the fields, upgrade the tennis court area, add lighting, add more restrooms and the skate park. So, you know, these are planned improvements, but they haven't been built. You can see the pool also in the Carmichael master plan, but we already talked about water play that have not yet been built. We also, over at Sutter Jensen, there was a master plan developed to add a playground over there and more parking. So I'm sort of curious, just like with the last slide of these planned improvements, which ones you would put a high priority on implementing? So we're going to, so we're collecting all these different polls and these questions. So if you could take a few minutes and tell me which of the things, once again, you think are really important for the district to start tackling in terms of things that we planned but not been able to build?
While we wait for this, there's a question that's come up in the chat and I don't know what's up next for polling, but they're asking if we have a poll of the attendees so that we know who the audience is?
Like, no, we're.
Demographics.
We don't have, we don't have anything where I ask like how many people are age or demographics about them? How are we doing here, Cal?
We're at 74% voted. These are for Carmichael Park and Sutter Jensen.
Both.
Just answering one of the questions here.
And so this master plan for Carmichael Park has been out there for almost 10 years now. And so you need to understand what, what needs to be prioritized.
All right. Well, I just want to clarify that these were planned improvements. We're not adding new ones to them.
Right.
One has asked, why isn't pickleball on the list? Because it wasn't included in the original master plan.
Right, so we're just asking about planned improvements that are already planned. And we're not talking about removing the dog park, any of the uses that exist already that are included in the master plan.
Correct. And that's why there's also no option for other, because these are very specific amenities or upgrades identified by the master plans.
Right. So how, are we good, Cal?
We're at 85%. So get your votes in. Give it another count of five. Okay.
Okay, so it seems like there's a lot of support for the pavilion. I was at the farmer's market and I saw how important that sort of social function is and park lighting was, was very high. But you also, you know, I mean, doesn't feel like people need a lot of additional parking, but you've got, you know, the skate park and the tennis court upgrades is also important and additional restrooms. So this is, this is, can provide some direction to the district on how they should proceed forward with prioritizing those improvements. So I have one last poll to ask you about, and that is some of the emerging trends, like things that weren't probably that much around when the Carmichael Park was planned and, you know, so pickleball, we've been hearing a lot about people interested in pickleball, some interest in a bike park or a pump track or something. All abilities playground, which allows parallel play between different peoples of different abilities, and then interest in more community gardens. So I'm curious if any of these items are things that you feel are very important for the district to be tackling. And once again, if you have something that's not on the list and you want added to the list, that you want to be added to the park system, you can check other and then show it to us in the chat box so we can kind of identify that.
All right, I'm just going to answer a couple of questions here. So someone, David, you've asked a couple of times, I'm sorry. Maybe directed to a link that gives me access to the district's draft master plan. So if you go to our Parks Plan website, so CarmichaelParksPlan.com, there is a link to the 2008 approved master plan that we are updating.
You've seen some people mentioning disc golf over here. If you've lost your audio, you might be able to join on your phone.
Or sign off and jump back on.
Sign off and jump on again.
All right, a few more seconds. We're at 92, 93%. Ooh, we might have the most, most votes on this poll so far, guys. All right, let's give it to the count of five.
Interesting, so pickleball, there's a large continues for that as well as an all abilities playground, interesting, and community garden. But even, even when 30% of the community wants something, we note that. So we're going to, I, we're going to continue on with this, but I feel like I want to stop for a second, maybe deal with some of the questions that are coming up along the way. This is, this is so great, we're getting all this input. As I say, we are documenting it all so we can go back and collect it, but we, we don't want to just have everybody sitting there where we read to you the comments and such. But Melanie, do you want to start scroll through some of the comments?
So there's, there's a lot of questions as to why or the process that we're still, we haven't fully realized the Carmichael Park master plan. So, you know, why is that? Or what's the plan for improvements that are slated that haven't happened yet? There's quite a few about that.
Okay.
I saw, I saw one and I'd like to answer that question. Like, no, we're, we're not, we're not still working on something 13 years ago. We're updating what was done 13 years ago. And this is the update in 2021 to that plan. So it's, it's not that we're still working on it per se. It's, it's something that has to be updated every 10 years. I think I was quoted in the paper saying, if somebody would have come to us, you know, 20 years ago and said pickleball, we'd go, what? Or bike parks weren't a big, a deal as much. Can you, so in, in this field, you have to keep going back out every, you know, 10 years is our feeling. It's a good thing to go out and see what are the emerging trends and what else, what should we be changing? So I want to be clear on that.
And that kind of ties into that. So Mike, I'm going to ask you this one. I think we can know the answer fairly quickly though. Why hasn't the approved master plan been implemented?
The approved master plan for Carmichael Park was in specific?
Jensen, yes.
And so to Jensen, lack of funds. The, in the 18, 19 months I've been here, we, we have, we did put in the, the bocce ball courts that were part of that master plan. It just comes flat out to funding. We do not have it, so. But we need to know what people want still. That's not a reason to bury your head in the sand and, and not look at the things we ought to be doing.
So, and frankly, that gets a little bit into the, to discussion in the next slide. So, well, two things are coming up. There's a theme in the questions here about, well, where would the, you know, pickleball courts go? Where would a dog park go or something like that? First, we have to identify the, if it's a priority for the community to have one, and then we would look to find the appropriate spot or a couple of different potential spots. And then there would be a design process associated with looking at that park specifically to do that. A lot of people have had some ideas about potential locations that we'll, we'll use as we go through the process. And if there's time, we can even chat a little bit if somebody wants to pull up a specific park and talk about it. But the first step at the highest level is, is to understand the priorities of the community because we create this big wish list and we have our prioritizations, but not all of it can, you know, we can't afford it all, to do it all. So currently, how most park improvements happen is we get some money from property taxes. We get what's our park and luff fees. So when a new development occurs, they pay a fund, into the fund for parks so that the new people will have access to parks. There's the foundation, which has been able to support the Parks District for a number of years. And the Parks District aggressively pursues grants, although that's not, you know, they're very competitive and that's not always the way. They also, a lot of their programs and things that they operate, they charge fees to get a level of cost recovery from them. And it's 71% cost recovery is really, really good for Parks District. So basically, as we move forward, and this is sort of a really basic question, and we'll sort of set it up. We haven't, we have tonight created a list of the priorities, what the community thinks are most important to undertake. And we have two options to pursue that forward. One is we limit the improvements that we accomplished based on current funding sources. And I will share with you that the funding sources are pretty lean. Carmichael is able to stretch their dollars and work within a budget that's much lower than many of the surrounding Parks Districts and communities. Just, that's the nature of how it is because of property tax space and there's not that much development going into for luff fees. So we can limit it to the current sources or we can pursue an assessment or bond where, you know, every property contributes a certain amount of money to improvements to the park system. The district actually pursued such an assessment a number of years ago and it passed. And they were able to collect some funds from that. However, a legal technicality of the way it had been originally set up, it went to court and they had to stop that assessment. And actually, I think even refund the assessments, although a lot of people said just keep it. And that assessment has really actually helped to continue the park operations, particularly through COVID when there's been a number of challenges to that. There are, you know, other kinds of sources where people, you know, may donate a bench or, or you create a partnership to help build, you know, a feature in a park. But they aren't really predictable, you know, long range planning things. They're sort of things that help us to get there. So a basic question, and it's, there is no right answer, is whether we really need to limit our improvements and work within our budget, or whether we as a community think that improvements to the park system are so important to the community's lifestyle and to promote healthy living and all the things that Carmichael believes in. And look at how many people have come to this meeting, they think parks are important and they would be endorsed some level of assessment so that the Parks District knows how to proceed from there. So I'm going to do a quick little poll to get a pulse on what people think about how we should fund improvements. And you've got to pick one or the other because we, you know, just get a sense. And that may frame some of the discussions about as we get this priority list, how far we can get down the priorities depending on how we fund things.
Right, we're at 88%, so get your votes in. Right, we'll give it to a count of five. Any last? People that weren't at their screens or still thinking?
Oh, that's interesting. That's interesting. So two thirds of the people think that, that it's worth investing in pursuing an assessment to sort of enhance the park system, which is very, very encouraging there. I think that provides some interesting information to the district about how they may want to pursue that. So, but I do want to go back now because we have so many questions that have come up. And maybe if we can just systematically kind of run down them. And Mike, you may have to help me answer some of these and such, just because I want to make sure that everybody came to this meeting, feels at least we tried. Feels at least we tried to get your answers to some of those questions. So let's get some of these.
There are a lot of questions related to how and when pickleball will be integrated into Carmel Park. Or, gosh, I keep saying Carmel. Carmichael Park or another park? And the, the efforts of the district behind getting that done quickly. Those are a good portion of the questions.
So Mike, not to put you on the spot, but chat with us about the pickleball thinking right now.
Well, it's, first of all, it's nice to hear, because, you know, we, we've had, you know, maybe one or two comments in my time here, and it was, it was, it was pre-COVID. So we know there's interest out there. Our, our indoor pickleball has been great. I think it's got to come, anything like, anything that happens, whether it's pickleball, a bike park, any of these playgrounds, they, they've got to go through this master plan update process. So the point of you being on tonight, and so many comments about pickleball, it would have to be incorporated into the master plan to, to get done. So, um, you just can't decide to go out one day and change the courts. There's, you, you, you need to follow the roadmap that, whether it was ten years ago, and now we're gonna update it. So what I'm gonna say to the pickleball folks is you need to continue as part of this process, engage with us. Um, as the pickleball moves forward, and the idea of pickleball, whether it's at Carmichael Park or somewhere else, it's either converting tennis courts, you know, it's got to be talked out, because the point is, um, those tennis courts get used quite a lot by tennis players, too. So are there enough that everybody can share? And, um, and we know that our neighbor over Mission Oaks has, had converted some tennis courts, so we know it's been done. But it's got to go through the master plan process, and then we've got to find the funding to do it. So it's, it's a process, but you've got to be part of the process and keep coming back and being there, just like the, the bike path, the bike people or the playground people or the, um, the skateboard, the skateboarders. You've got to be part of this process and go, go through this with us.
Okay, so there, there's some comments about, you know, volunteers and helping to do maintenance and such in the parks. I think actually the, there's a large number of volunteers that help the district right now. I mean, that is one of the things that your district is noted for. They're suggesting having some more volunteer days. Maybe that's the thing to think about at the district.
And we, we have, we have, we have friends at the Botanical Garden that did do an outstanding job. Uh, the roses out in front of the district office have been taken care of by a, a lovely lady for years. So there are volunteer opportunities. We're, uh, but if any of you are out there and you think you're gonna hop on that big mower, that's not gonna happen. I'm not letting anybody drive the big mower throughout the parks to mow the lawns. I'm just stating that right there.
Melanie, what other questions can we grab up?
Um, why was this skate park at La Sierra closed?
Um, I, I'm gonna bring Elena in on that one, because she probably knows better than I do. But I know it was in disrepair, but, but maybe she can give a better history.
I guess it was deemed, the equipment was deemed unsafe, and the district did not have the funding to repair or replace the equipment.
Okay, there's more funding questions. Thank you, Elena. From Diane, what efforts have been made to fundraise for specific projects which may interest businesses, volunteers, et cetera, to provide assistance?
Well, let's use the brand new bocce ball courts as the A number one in my time here. Uh, that project was, uh, those, those courts cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The district was able to use some of its fees that it's collected to pay for part of it. Um, we used our, used Prop sixty-eight per capita grant. And then, um, there were some private donors that started the whole process and kicked the money in. The Sullivan Pennington, uh, family that, that did that. And then on top of it, uh, what finished this off and made it happen was the Parks Foundation that gave us, I believe, fifty-eight thousand dollars, uh, to, uh, to be able to do those courts. So this district has done things with partnerships. Um, the one thing we find with partnerships is it takes a, it takes a long time to get through it. That hundred and fifty thousand dollar bocce ball court, um, I know before I got here, they had done a bid earlier, and it was, I think, about a hundred thousand. The longer it takes to fundraise and do those things, the fees, the, the prices go up. To not have a funding source that's, you know, always there, or, you know, be able to do that, that makes, that makes doing some of these improvements tougher to do, not impossible. And, and I, like I said, this district has stretched its dollars. I've been here nineteen months, but I will tell you, this district has stretched its dollars to make what it, what it does possible. It's not perfect, but possible. So I hope that answers the question.
Another just, you know, idea in the toolkit, someone, there's been a couple of them, solar, um, as a way to offset costs, so I just make sure.
I had a, I, I had a talk with Sbudd several months ago about that exact thing. And I appreciate you bringing it up, and I wish there was an easy answer to, to talk about the solar and putting it in and being able to do that and, and costs. It's, it's a process, but, um, there have been initial discussions with Sbudd. So that's, that's a great suggestion. I appreciate it.
Um, about volunteering, Garrett said he loves the idea of volunteering. Are there any sort of organized trash pickup days? Um, he's been going with his kids to pick up trash at Jan Park regularly?
Yeah. Um, no, none, none off the top of my head, organized, our park, but our parks manager is on this call. He's not one of the panelists, but he, he's out, James is out there, so he's heard it. So those are the kind of things that when we're talking about a district of, of, of the ideas that we get out of here that may not even be, you know, something that works for a master plan, but people want to volunteer. That's what would go into our yearly fiscal year work plan. So that's a suggestion that we will take up, and, and I appreciate that.
Linda, can we briefly, um, go back, or Kelly, can we briefly go back to the schedule and discuss when? Um, there's a couple of questions about the schedule, like when a draft will be available for review? I think I have the schedule at the third slide.
So, so we're gonna take the recommendations from tonight, sit down and work with the park districts and see how best we can address the priorities and the recommendations, and go through all the notes and stuff that people have also included, and come up with a, a draft plan that will, should be available in May, um, for people to review. And then we'll hold another meeting for people to comment on and sort of make their comments about it. Because as we move something forward, we want to make sure that this is the consensus of what Carmichael truly prioritizes and wants to do. So that will be happening in May and June. Now, I think if you registered for this webinar, well, they, we will have you on an email list. So when the draft is available, we can let you know to sort of update you. In the meantime, you can also visit the website. I know a lot of people have asked about the survey and wanted to see like, you know, the demographics and things that are in the survey, and that will be available on the website, too, right, Melanie?
Yes.
Yes. So some people have been asking about that. We just, we just highlighted some things tonight.
We think we want to just briefly talk about housekeeping. So the formal presentation is over, um, as far as the slides we have prepared. But at this point, we will start kind of, you know, answering, raising hands, and we can start looking at specific topics. There's quite a few questions about, um, a skate park and a bike park. So we do want to at some point address, you know, that and let those people speak as well. But the, the formal quote-unquote presentation is.
So, so now we're completely town hall.
Yes. So this is when we would want you to raise your hand. We have several hands raised, so I think, Kelly, we can kind of just start going through. Seeing as we've been answering a lot of the Q and A, we can give the hand raises some, some love here.
Okay, yeah.
I'm gonna just go in orders. I see him, so Jane, age weren't, I know you, you, some of these people, hopefully, are still by your computer and you're still ready and still have the question. But Jane, I'm gonna go ahead and give you permission to unmute first.
Okay, um, because of the... Can you hear me?
Yes, now, yes.
Okay, good. Um, because of COVID, I've been spending a lot more time in the parks. And, um, I noticed at Jan that they have a walking path that is really not improved. They also have concrete pathways through there, but I really like that natural pathway around it. And, and I don't think there was any cost involved at all with it, and I'm wondering if you can use that concept in other parks.
I think that's, that's a, something that we'll take into consideration. That's a good idea.
The other thing is, sometimes on Sunday morning, um, it is a little tricky getting parking to go to the farmer's market. And, um, I don't, I hate to pave over, but, um, I don't, you, I don't know if the parking there is being looked at, the need for more parking.
The Carmichael map did include in its master plan some additional parking.
Uh-huh, mm-hmm, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else got their hand raised, Kat?
Susan Skinner, you're next in line. I'm gonna give you permission to unmute yourself. You're still there.
Why don't we let, when we unmute somebody, let the next person on deck know so that they're ready?
Oh, yeah. So I also have a John Toriano, Sam Fast, Bob Kerr, all you guys. John, we're gonna move to you while we wait for Susan.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Couple of, a couple of questions and points. Um, our son, uh, was a Carmichael Beaver, and at the time, they used, um, you know, Rio, uh, lot as a, a pool. It's a fantastic pool also, because it's very deep. And you also have Jesuit, if you need to use that one. So you have some pool possibilities. I like the idea of, so kids needing someplace to cool off. Another one here, though, I do some stats, a hundred people are not quite representative of Carmichael. And I'm sure you guys realize that. The last one here I have is all the other districts around us have realized pickleball. I'm sorry about bringing up pickleball. I know you've seen me do a lot of pickleball things here. But there is an aged community here in Carmichael. And I understand about the funding that this fellow was talking about. But it seems to me the other districts have been able to go faster with pickleball, even with the, the simple thing of putting lines on a tennis ball court. However, in the San Juan Park, they've been able to do a fantastic job of taking one, one side and make three courts out of it. And they've even gone through and put separate doors for each of the sides. So I'm kind of curious and a little wondering why it's so hard to convert the pickleball courts, I mean, the tennis court courts, into pickleball courts. Thank you.
I, I don't, I thank you for your comments. I think that those are things that we will need to consider.
Yeah, but why not now? What, why is pickleball not on the forefront of something? It seems, this is a planning thing for some reason. Why not go forward with something that's gonna really benefit the society here in Carmichael faster and find a fast track for it?
You, you do, you do realize we have, we, I mean, I know with COVID, it's shut down. But, but we've been doing indoor pickleball for, for quite a while, I would guess, Elena. I mean, before I got here, I would, I would say.
We can't, we can't play pickleball. It's outside. You gotta be kidding me on that one.
Wait, 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 so hold on. I, I, at first one, we had, you said that we hadn't been doing pickleball. We, we have been doing pickleball inside, and you're right, COVID has shut that down. But Elena, how long have we been doing that?
Probably about five years. We opened up our indoor courts.
Okay. So we're, we're aware, I mean, there is an interest here. And we, you know, like I said, it's, it's through the process that we will start moving on this. You know, I'm up until tonight, like I said, I've been here nineteen months. I heard it once in a meeting, but now we're hearing it tonight, and that's good that you've come out.
I'm sorry to say this, but why are the other districts embracing so much faster than Carmichael?
Well, most likely, those other districts are all around us.
Older crowd.
Well, let, let, let me, so first of all, like when Mission Oaks, uh, converted theirs, they have an assessment. They have money to do that. It is a, there are other priorities at times here when you have limited funds. And Mission Oaks and the other ones that have the outdoor pickleball, everybody surrounding us has an assessment. Like I talked about, the, the bocce courts, it took partners upon partners upon partners to, to do that. Now, I realize converting pickleball courts isn't the price of those things, but it's also got to be talked about, that you're going, now gonna be taking tennis courts out. So now are my, are we gonna hear from the tennis court people? This needs to be thought out and done, um, as a process, not just, I want pickleball, so I'm going to change courts. I love pickleball. I think it's a great thing. It's on our radar. Trust me.
I'm sorry, I don't want to be the big speaker here, but the court in San Juan, there's only two tennis courts. They took one out to make three. Over in Given, there's only two tennis courts, and they put lines on those courts. Over at Carmichael Park, how many courts do we have there?
We have six tennis courts.
No kidding. How can't, why not one of them be converted?
Well, we're here in that tonight, so thank you very much.
So I think that, that.
But I want to be positive. How can we help you somehow?
That would be nice, that would be nice.
How can you help you that happen?
Yeah, so, then, then you know what? You give me a call next week at the district office, and you and I'll talk. How's that? I have no problem with that. But, but going back and forth tonight and taking up everybody's time, and you're right, we're here to be positive.
Right.
So, thank you.
I think that, that sort of, because, when, Mike is trying to say that, that there are people using the tennis courts, too. So we, he has to, you know, it has to be discussion with pickleball people and tennis court people and discovering the best thing together. So I think that's one of those things where knowing that pickleball is an important thing, and setting up a group to figure out the best way to approach that. Because you can see in the chat, there are some people that are concerned about loss of tennis courts. So, so setting, like knowing this is a priority now can focus some energy on bringing the groups together to find a compat, a way to coexist together. So that's, I think that's, and it's, what we're trying to do here is really know where the priority is, because now we know, and they need to focus some energy on that, and that's a good.
I didn't see lots of tennis courts in the chat. I saw the opposite, where we need a pickleball court. Sorry.
Yeah. Unfortunately, they, that, there was, there was a couple of comments to that, and we just got to be wary of that. And I'm sorry, what was your first name? So when you call next week?
John.
John? Oh, yeah, John. All right, John, give me a holler next week, okay?
Will do.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So there is a question that's come up a couple of times about the Del Campo bathrooms.
Um.
When are they gonna be?
Yeah, I would, yeah, unfortunate, unfortunately, um, when are they gonna be fixed? So, yeah, there was some tree damage there. The, the problem with the, the Del Campo bathrooms, from what I've understood from the history here, has been a huge amount of vandalism to those bathrooms. So much graffiti, so much so that the parks and wrecked the, uh, the district years ago decided to, to shut them down. I think they do get some use, uh, maybe from a, like users, I don't know if we give them a key or not. But, um, what we had heard about that from the park maintenance was just the overall vandalism and just trying to keep the place open and not being destroyed. Uh, they were blowing up toilets and, and things like that. So I think that's the reason for the, um, the, for Del Campo bathrooms being closed. Now, then they were just taken out by a, um, then, now they were just taken out by a giant oak tree, too, so.
Win for losing.
No, no, can't.
Kelly, Susan is next in line.
All right, Susan, if you want to unmute. Are you there, Susan?
Um, I think Susan, um, I'll, I'll. I think Susan, I'll, I'll probably forward an email from Susan. She had emailed me about Jan Park and about the wildlife there. So I'll take that email and forward it to you folks, so you have it. I know she might be having some technical difficulties, it looks like.
Okay.
Okay. Bob Kerr, you're next in line. If you want to unmute, and then Nick Driver, you are after him. Okay, we'll go to Nick. Nick, are you ready?
Yeah, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. Well, I feel like after this call, I have to try pickleball. It sounds like it's a blast. So somebody brought up the word disrepair when they were talking about one of the amenities that was removed from the parks. It just got me thinking about the, the long view of things here. And I'm somebody who wants to stick around for the next couple of decades at least. But I just, I just wanted to throw this out there to the group that anything that we're investing in, we should just really be sure is something that we're going to be able to maintain and keep beautiful. Because the best parks that I've ever been to, it's not about having a pool necessarily, but they're well kept up and well lit, so they feel beautiful and safe. So that's what I'm looking for and hoping that we can keep our eyes on the dollars there and, you know, what, we're going to be able to keep up in good shape 10 years down the line.
Thank you. That, that I, I, we really appreciate that. Because you're right, it's not about putting the pool or a skateboard park or all, those are great things to put in. But if we can't maintain them, just as, you know, I, one of the questions was about turf. And when I got here, we, you know, we were going to, we were off on our way on a turf program to upgrade all of our sports turf. And unfortunately, COVID budget cuts took care of that. But you're 100% right. We got to be able to maintain it so it's fun and safe.
Yeah, I'm, I came from Sacramento recently as a transplant here. And I feel like park maintenance in comparison is a little spotty. Some parks were pretty awful, in my opinion. And the thought of somebody coming to our community and just knowing that they're in Carmichael because of the park's level of maintenance and quality, being at that level is just, it's something to aim for and strive for with everything that we're planning.
I, I agree. And I, like I said, I appreciate those comments because it is something that is high on the priority list of, of just being able to maintain them. Like I said, the, the, the district staff has done a good job of, of maintaining everything it's had with the dollars it has. But I will tell you that it is, there's some tough choices that sometimes have to be made. So, but maintenance needs to be high priority.
I, I believe it. Thanks for the opportunity to hear from us.
Thanks.
Can we let Bob try again? He was, and then Susan, you're going to be after Bob, and I'm going to help you unmute. But Kelly, can we let Bob have the floor?
Yep, he's unmuted. Bob, are you there?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, I used to be a part of the staff with Carmichael Recreation and Park District. And I used to run the Los Sierra Skate Park for nine years. In the last three years, I've worked for the Sheriff's Community Impact Program, you know, project called Project Lifelong. We have shipping containers at school sites, and we have a bunch of ramps, and the kids bring the ramps out, and we have a skate program. I skateboard every day of my life. I have a ton of people that skateboard in Carmichael. We skateboard all around Carmichael. We need a skate park. I had, I, I was pretty much the person who put the skate park on the master plan last time. I want to stay positive about this, and I feel good about keeping it on the map. And I'm, I'm curious, now that it's at 27%, how do I know that that's going to be kept on the map?
So I don't think there's plans to remove it from the Carmichael Master Plan by taking pri- so we're not taking it off by looking at prioritization. It's just, it's really the, the order in which things get undertaken. That's, that's, that's all that prioritizing does. I don't think there's any thought of removing it from the map. And I think the district recognizes the strong desire to have a skate park.
That's wonderful. I'm, I'm glad to hear that. I happened to go skateboard over in Carmichael Park. And there was a point where some of the kids that I'd raised at my park and I, we were skateboarding over there. And then all of a sudden, all these kids came from, out of nowhere. They had skateboards, they had scooters, they had bikes. And I said to them all, it's so silly to me right now that we don't have a skate park. And I gave them, them the history of what was going on, and I told them that hopefully in the future, we have something to look forward to. So I hope that's the case.
Awesome. Thank you. Kelly, let's give Susan one more try. So Susan, I'm going to click Ask to Unmute. Now you should get a notice that says unmute, and then you should be-
Unless she's on her, unless she's on her phone.
But it says you're unmuted. Oh, it says unable to unmute.
Yeah.
All right. Sorry, Susan.
Like, like, I'll, I'll email Susan. I, as I said, I will let her know that we're forwarding her concerns about Jan Park on, on, so they'll be heard. I'm sorry, I'm going to try to email her right now.
All right. Brenda Mock, are you ready to speak?
Yes, we are. This is Tiffany Mock Gilman and Brenda Mock. And in our family, among three individuals, we have over 15 years of serving on the board of the Carmichael K9 Association. And I know that we're, we no longer serve. We know that the park is going to be partnering with the K9 Corral Association differently, and that that's going to sunset. And I'm, I'm happy about that because I think it's been a long time coming that the, the district kind of took more leadership and ownership around that, that asset in the park. I, I'm a little disturbed. Pre-COVID, we've conducted surveys several times over the last probably 10 years. And consistently, the, the dog park gets over 1,100 individual visits on a weekly basis. It is by far and away the thing in Carmichael Park that, besides like softball, that is bringing people into the park and utilizing the park. Often, when you go into the park during the day, the only people that you see around are people really in the dog parks. And so I'm really kind of discouraged that there was nothing in today's presentation about the dog park. It was a large part of the previous master plan. The park, the park, the dog park community raised money and services and that were valued at about $80,000. And under previous leadership, not under Mike, the, the plan that was really adopted was really without communicating with the community, was really abandoned. Wasn't followed in terms of where we, what we ended up with. And really, in many cases, we spent way more money and it actually made the park worse. It now has, you know, hu- huge mud puddles in it. It, it has become, in many cases, huge parts of the year unusable. And I'm, I'm just discouraged. And there's no, there's no ADA access. We used to have walking paths in there for people to walk around while their dogs were playing. We don't have that anymore, even though that was supposed to come back. So I just, I'd like you to talk about what has happened in the previous things that have been going on in the last year that led us to this kind of high level discussion. But somehow, there's no mention of the dog park. I see on the, the drawings that were being posted up for Carmichael Park that even, it looked like the dog park area doesn't even exist, as far as I can tell on that map. So I'm just trying to understand where the district is in understanding the dog park. And certainly, I just also want to say, we really support an assessment and a bond measure, whatever it takes. We think parks are really important in our community. And, and I've been really, we've been really pleased to see the improvements that have happened in the last couple of years. And we're, want to be supportive as any way we can. The dog park has a lot of really active volunteers who pick up the trash and do all kinds of things and do plantings. We've paid for the light that's in there. But I just really want to understand how it is that we're not actually talking about fixing the dog park, which gets as much use as many of the other things in, in the park.
Yeah. Well, thank, thank you for what you've done and, and bringing that up. The dog park's important. And just so you know, yes, some things were unhighlighted on the map that went out because it's already there. And dog park isn't moving, and it isn't going anywhere, just as the, oh, you know, there, there's a few other features that I got the questions about. We were just trying to highlight the changes. So, so being that I used to maintain six dogs parks, I will tell you, grass and dog parks do not match. It doesn't matter what you do and how you do it, you can never seem to make it work. I've, I've run dog parks for over 10 years before I was here. Yes, I know it, and I know, and I know it's muddy. But, but the thing I want to go on is going back to, like you said, that the, this, what's the CCCA and is, is sort of coming in with us, and we're going to start to partner more. And one of the things that's on our radar is putting in shade structures and benches in, into those, into the dog park. Doing the things that need to be done. Once again, limited budget, so in a lot of things, we tend to partner with people. As, as we're talking about this whole dog park and coming together, we have some subcommittees, and one of them is talking about fundraising. And how are, how is the district going to be able to put money aside and maybe do some fundraising to put some permanent benches in there? I don't like the chairs that are in there personally. The, we just bought, we just bought 30 of them to put in there. But I'd like something more permanent, that, you know, the permanent nice benches. Maybe memorial benches for, you know, people can buy and put their dog's name on or, or a loved one. A shade structure would be very important. We lost a tree in the big storm in that, in that large dog park, and now we've lost shade. So it is on the radar. I want you to know that. There, there will be some talks about it. So we're, we are working on it. So just because it's not on that map there does not mean it's forgotten. In fact, I think, I'm, I'm hoping that as we move forward, we will have a better bond as we work together.
I'm really glad, I'm really glad to hear that. And, and just in general, I'd like to say, and again, Mike, I know this is before your time. But as, as the district matures in its ability to partner with community groups who have vested interests in different parts of the park, and, you know, there's clearly pickleball, and there's sports fields, and there's skateboarders, and there's the dog park people. The thing I really want to encourage the district to embrace is transparency around what we think we're working together towards. And, and then the hard decisions that have to be made at the end. Because the dog park is a really good example of what community thought it was raising funds for. And then decisions got made, kind of, at the, at the end of the day, that did not the community in such a way so that, so that when those changes happened, there was, there was no opportunity to have any feedback and to kind of negotiate and compromise. And so I just really, I, I'm sure that's your goal, but I just want to publicly state that that is one thing that I think the district could really continue to mature at, its ability to partner and be transparent.
I, I appreciate that. We will, we will definitely do our best on that. And like you said, I don't know what happened before. And, you know, to, after I leave, somebody may say, you know, that, you know, you know, I've used some bad phrases and, and used my name on it, said he didn't do this or didn't do that. So I know we can't make everyone happy, but being transparent and trying to talk to people and listen. And trust me, I, I, I listened to, to tonight. Maybe I, as somebody said, I may have had a little bit of an attitude. Yes, I'm sorry about that. But I heard about dog parks. I heard about pickleball. And I, and there's a lot of other things that, that we're going to need to do, and we will be as transparent. And this is the other thing. You pick up the phone or you email. If you got a question, you get ahold of us. And I have no problem with answering with emails and interacting with the public. So if there's things that are bothering you, you let me know. Okay?
So much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for the, all the work that was done years ago. I know dog parks aren't, aren't easy, and they're not easy to maintain. And whether it's DG or turf, it's just, you know, it's, the dogs are enjoying themselves. Okay, can't, can't, can't argue. And maybe the people are socializing too.
Is there anybody else with their hand raised, Kat?
Nine more. So Michelle Miller, you're available.
Hi, yes, I'm Michelle Miller. So I, I'm not going to go on too long. I just am grateful for this, this, this time to get together and just to feel part of the community and what's moving forward. Because I moved here with my family 21 years ago with two little girls. And one of them got to swim in the Carmichael Pool, the Carmichael Park, once, and then that was it. It was gone. I had them do lessons on my own, though, at American River College. But I always wanted to have a place for us to swim as a family. Not everybody can put a pool in. Now my girls are 22 and 24, and actually looking to possibly buy homes in the area. And the properties are in yours, there's no room in the yard to have a pool anymore. That's just a sign of the times. And, you know, I drive around and I see in other areas, there's pools. Now, when you did your presentation, I saw the dollar signs, and I went, oh, looks like that's not going to happen. So I guess I would say, I don't, with the heat that we have and, and water being something that we want to enjoy safely too, not using the river, because, you know, the river can be quite dangerous. It's beautiful to look at unless you know what you're doing. I appreciate any efforts that could be implemented to work with maybe San Juan Unified School District and their pools, that there are just more family times available in each area for, for people to go and enjoy. As I'm getting older, to, to still swim. And then to maybe even bring, when I have grandkids someday, to, you know, just have a family day at a local pool. Maybe it's not something that can be built at Carmichael Park, as I had always hoped. But I would think that that would be enjoyable. You know, the, the water play areas are great, but I don't see myself running around one and playing in them. So I don't think the kids would much appreciate that. But anyway, that was just my thought, that I, I still do feel that with the heat that we have, we have, you know, almost nine months of summer. I mean, in Sacramento, it was just, you know, beautiful sunny weather. And that I would like the pool element to still be included in the plan, even if it is outsourced somehow. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Scott Connell? All right, let's see if this works.
Who's after Scott?
There's Scott. After Scott, we have Christine Mayhand, Scott Armstrong, David Rankin, Bob Kerr, Justin Kennedy, Sean-
Hello?
Okay.
Hello.
Hi, thank you. I got two questions, really. The scope of this seemed to be pretty limited to sort of Carmichael Plan. Why was the O'Donnell Heritage, which seemed pretty popular in some of the focus groups, in those locations not mentioned? Especially with that, O'Donnell and Jan Parks seem to have quite a bit of underutilized area to maybe fit some of these existing facilities. So I would like to see some of the plan expanded outside of Carmichael Park. I just want to make sure that that didn't fall off the table or that, you know, overall, it's the, still in the plan.
Yeah, no, that, you're exactly right. Tonight, what we were trying to do is understand the, the range of uses we need to accommodate within the park system. The only reason Carmichael Park was up there was there are a lot of planned things that haven't been built yet to understand those priorities. So we're taking all this input tonight, and then we'll come up with a plan for each park within the system about how it could be improved based upon community priorities. And then once we develop that, we'll be holding a follow-up town hall, our meeting. I think we, it was in May sometime. I think that was the, I'm trying to remember the schedule, sort of as we've kind of pulled everything together. So, yes, but we have met in the focus groups, and people have also emailed in some comments and some questions about ideas of things we could do at specific parks. So, yes, we'll be doing it. This was really like to get an overall sense of, well, we need to accommodate, you know, this and this and this, and how will we- well, we need to accommodate, you know, this and this and this, and how will we distribute them now?
Okay, great. And then add another question. So going through like the master plan last couple of days, I noticed there was Capra Park, which seems to be, so what's the status of that? Is it, it's leased to somebody? And is it possible to sell that as, as a source of funding? Cause will it ever be open as a park? Or the neighbor is going to completely shut down every attempt? Cause it seems perfect for summer camps for kids with the horses. You know, an urban farm, sort of like soilborne farms, a ranch of Cordova, a farm stand. But the neighbors probably would never allow that over there from what it looks like with the tiny street. So could that be a creative source of funding to get out of that? Or is it, there's some kind of law written into the, the sale to you that you can't sell it?
Very good question. And with not being here that long, I don't have the answer about whether we can sell it or not. Being here not very long also, I don't know of any neighbor issues, but there may be. Right now, it's just utilized as a, you know, somebody pays to rent out the, the place and, and board horses and we get some funding off of it. I believe there was at some point, some talk of turning that into a working farm. Like you had just mentioned, I don't know where that is. To your point on selling it off, I know in the past, there was a great district administrator named Jack Harrison that did some very unique things to build those parks. And going back to that 2008 plan and you talk about, you know, not, yeah, not everything was done there. But if you look in there, I believe three parks were built out of that because a guy like Jack Harrison was able to, at Patriot, sell off some land to build a park. And then when there was discussions of other sales of, of space, it didn't happen, but then the community jumped in and helped. That's the kind of things that I think we, we, we should look at. I remember a, an old finance person telling me that worked for a school district, never sell off school property. Never sell off park property. But I do think the creative things can be done with Capra. I think it's just what it is right now, but a working ranch is something that was in people's minds at some point.
But you can't just go and visit it right now. Are you allowed to just go to that park and check it out? Or is it closed? I saw one of the comments say, neighbors love the park, but is it really a park?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, park my car and walk in there?
I, you know what? I don't have an answer for you. So let me do this. Let me find out. And then hopefully I can answer it. But I don't have one right now, Scott. Sorry about that one. I don't know. But I, but I can find out. You know, my email's on the district website. Shoot me an email and I'll find the answer and get back to you. How's that? Thanks for the question though. Now, now I gotta go find an answer, Scott.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Kat, who's up next?
Hi, I think I'm next. I just saw the unmute button come through. Oh, great. So I'm Christine Megan. I know, hard name to pronounce. So I actually live right next to Cardinal Oaks Park. My property is right on the border. And we've been here 40 years. And I will tell you, Cardinal Oaks Park doesn't look like it's changed in 40 years. It's a really small park and I know you guys want to encourage people to get out during COVID, but I will tell you during the last maybe 11 months, we have hundreds of people coming to this park from four o'clock to closing. And it's become a bit of a nightmare. It's a destination park. It's not really a community park at that time. I've dealt with a lot of vandalism. There's destruction to the park itself. And of course, these are issues I'm trying to work through and I really don't know what to do because I've been told numerous times it's a public park. But nonetheless, one of the concerns of us, those of us who live along the park is security. I know we've been asking for lighting for years. I know there are certain areas that are very dark, that we could use some lighting. We have some very basic concerns, not necessarily enjoyable things to do. Right? But definitely if there's things that you can put into your master plan around security, that would be great. I also love the solutions that you have in terms of a community garden, or I think you called it a native garden. Because if we can do things here in the park that shows that we care about it, maybe these folks that come in and damage the park realize, no, we care about this. You can't just come in and destroy our park. And then I have several questions around that. Right? Those things sound like we, things we can volunteer to help build. Is that a possibility? Or do we need to have some sort of, some sort of like funding to do that? Can we volunteer to build it, to buy the plants, to help build these things? And I don't know if you know, are familiar with this area, but Cardinal Oaks Park, it's a very, this is a very weird block. We have everything from businesses to senior homes to apartments to homes that go from five figures to seven figures. It's a very interesting park. And I think it would be great to be able to engage the community in the park and not just attract people from other areas to come here and just go run amok. So my first question again, can we volunteer to help build these things? And the second question, I know Jerry's on the line. He may know me. I tend to be a pain in the butt, but I asked you about those strawberry trees next to my property back in August. I'm wondering when you're planning to prune those. Some kid was trying to break a branch on that on Tuesday and unfortunately as people start coming to the park, more people start coming to the park, we're just going to have more issues. And if you, oh, I'm sorry. And if you don't have the resources, can I hire somebody to prune those trees?
James, James is on the call.
Oh, James, I'm sorry. I always call him Jerry. I'm sorry.
No, no, don't worry because Jerry works for him. So you just call him one and one, they, they realize it after all these years, I would suspect. So James is on the call. I'm sure, I'm sure he's heard that. On the lighting part, you talked about, once again, had to talk with smud recently about upgrading some of those lights and, and maybe shielding them. Cause you know, the, the problem, the issue there is you want to get more light there, but you're also, you've got, you know, you've got the, you're, you're a neighbor and you don't want, you know, so LEDs are great, but are they going to light up your backyard? So.
I have, I have lighting in my backyard. It's not my backyard. It's basically the park area, right? There are dark corners in the park. Yeah.
Yeah, there, we, we, James and I walked that park a couple of months back and counted the light poles and then made a call to smud. Supposedly those lights are all supposed to be upgraded to LED sometime in the spring. I, I don't, you know, I will check back in with the smud rep and see what's going on with that. But that's, that's a lot of, Cardinal Oaks is a, is a highly used park and, and you're right, it hasn't been updated. And I think one of the things we like to get from all you folks that live around there is native gardens, whatever you're talking, walking paths, whatever new playground. We really want to hear from the Cardinal Oaks folks. So as this process goes on, we need to hear from you and say, hey, this would be great for our park. That, I, I've been to that playground. I've seen it. It needs to be replaced. It's time to modernize, maybe move it. I don't know. But you know, we, we're going to come back with some ideas for Cardinal Oaks, but hearing about the nature areas or, you know, safer, more lighting, certain things, that's what we need to hear. So we appreciate that.
Okay. So I mean, is, how, how do you want to hear from us? Cause I know a lot of the folks that live near me didn't, didn't even know about this meeting and couldn't even attend. So I kind of try and spread the word here.
Yeah. I mean, we put, we put the signs in the park. We put postcards to within a, within a mile of every, of every house there.
I don't get mail, but no, I am signed up to get an email blast. But I mean, how can we contribute ideas to you?
I, I think getting on, I think getting on the, the park master plan website that, that we have and sign up to be part of the emails. And then getting your input as this moves forward is the key. No different than the skateboard park people, the bike people, the pickleball people, you know, the things that you would like to see in, in your park to be upgraded that gets in the next master plan. I think it's important. Like I said, I've been to Cardinal Oaks. I think some refreshing and some changing to that park. Yeah, I, I think it's important. I think we know it's important. So we appreciate you being.
I'd be willing to volunteer. Yeah, I'm sure they'd be willing to volunteer too and definitely consider inclusion, right? And then sustainable solutions.
Well, I saw somebody who's a good with a backhoe. So I, I saw that, I just saw that chat go right through. So I don't know. I'm not going to let you in my parks with my lawnmower, but he did say it was, the person did say they were a backhoe operator. So I'll give them that.
All right, thank you. Electrical volunteers too here.
Yes.
Oh, I don't touch electricity, man. Yeah, nope.
The whole section of your volunteer opportunities.
Yeah, we're, we're logging all of this in, in the district. So Mike and Elena and Ingrid and James will have these chat logs and question and answer logs with everyone's willingness to volunteer and skills.
And we're going to, we're going to find you.
Yeah. So they can call a list together and, and, you know, activate volunteers. So if I haven't answered your question, it's because we, we are doing that.
Okay, Scott Armstrong, you're on deck is our next.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, thank you. This is Scott Armstrong. I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate you having the meeting and opening up the public. I know these can go long and sometimes get testy, but we appreciate what you do and you know, look forward to seeing some, some of these developments come to fruition. My, the reason why I'm on, I wanted to advocate for the skate park, which looks like it's still planned and I'm glad to hear that. I've been a resident for quite some time and unfortunately, right when my kids were old enough to really start utilizing skate park, it went away. However, I, my son is part of Project Lifelong, which I believe Bob mentioned earlier. It's a wonderful program. The kids have actually built ramps and used them at the, at Arden Middle School and other places around the area. So there's obviously a need for a hard skates, skate park put into the plans. So I'm glad to see that's moving forward. I would like to advocate for it. And also note that, you know, there are programs out there like Project Lifelong that would support the park and would actually use some of their philanthropic efforts to probably help maintain and ensure the part, the skate park was kept up. And, you know, on another note, I, I, I know pickleball is huge. I know it's, it's going to be part of the park. It's, it's obvious. That's the, you know, the case. But not, I, I believe that the individuals was talking about aged and the, the demographics of Carmichael. And I think, you know, it's true. It is probably older than some areas, but we also have to remember that a huge portion of the people that use the parks have families and kids. And I know just by where I live, there are multiple pickleball courts available. You already noted, there's an indoor program. Obviously COVID has taken that away, but I can't think of a single skate park in Carmichael. So unless you want the kids that skate, and there's a lot of them, going, you know, farther away or just turning around town. I can't think of a better use for the, the, that area. So with that, once again, I appreciate your efforts and your time and helping work with Park District. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's up next?
Yeah, I want to reach out to, hold on, I want to reach out to Cory. I see Cory's got, got some mad skills here. So I know, Cory, check the district website. Shoot me an email.
I think you just got recruited.
Yeah.
He has, he has lots of great ideas. I don't, Cory, I don't want you to feel like we've been ignoring you. So I think, yes, reach out to Mike so we can make sure we, we, and you can even me too. I'm at the, my email is up and we'd, we'd love to get you involved.
Okay, David Rankin. You're next. You're still there. You can unmute.
How are you all doing? Thank you panelists and Linda tonight. I sent a few messages out in the panel. Also my, my contact info and Linda, I also reached out to you on LinkedIn.
I saw that, yeah.
I am a resident here. I actually live about two blocks from La Sierra. Bought my house a year before they closed the skate park because I am a skateboarder. I have five kids. My oldest is 18, who enjoyed the skate park when it was first there. My youngest is five and learning to skateboard. As I mentioned, there's a lot of skate parks in Sacramento all around us. Unfortunately Carmichael is not one of them. There are many parks that are big bowls and stuff. I don't think we need something super elaborate like that. I think a, a normal street park, something that can be a hybrid for both bikes and skateboards would work well. I might put a few suggestions in the panel as well. And I would be happy to work with you and I'm sure Bob would be as well. I'm coming up with some ideas for skate parks that would be suitable and aesthetic for our community. So feel free to reach out to me and we'd be happy to work with you on that. So just wanted to put that out there.
Thanks, David.
You betcha. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have five more hands raised and we're going to take these final five as we're approaching the two hour mark.
Okay, Justin Kennedy?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, first I wanted to just thank you guys for, for doing this. I think it's a somewhat thankless position at times to be stuck in. Cause everyone has an opinion and eventually somebody has to pay for it. But that being said, I'm, a few points. One, I'm not sure of even why we throw things out there like those big water parks, the multimillion dollar price tags. It's, it's, it's almost like we don't know the community we lived in. I'm a fourth generation Carmichael resident with homeowner, raised kids here, high school age kids. I know the demographics. So anyway, I think the money would be best spent in biggest bang for the fuck. I mean, pickleball court, great. You mean conversion pickleball court. I'm not a pickleball player. Skate park, I saw the one in La Sierra. That was pretty nice. Don't know what happened, but I can see the need for that too. The space is already there. It's just a matter of building the structure, I imagine. Obviously it's overly simplistic to say that, but I have about 12 years experience on the Carmichael soccer board. It just went through a merger. We, CVFC, the new club has about 1,800 players it represents. I mean, it's tough to say exactly the number with, because COVID kind of stirred the pot all up and scattered people. And our grass has always stunk. And if it was green, it means because it rained. And if, or the circles around the heads were operating, so that, you know, the green circles around the sprinkler heads were good. But then we would go from there to it would get hot and we went water, except around the heads. And then it would be just weeds, right? And sticker bushes. So I know, I know you mentioned earlier, there are some turf plan that got crushed by COVID. Which I was super thrilled to hear the phrase turf plan. That was like, almost like a fantasy. That was great to hear. I was bummed to hear about the crushing, but the fact that it existed and rolled off your lips was like, hey, I hope it didn't get crushed to a point where it went away. Because we still have a lot of kids that want to play out there and, and we, we would like to play on something that is better suited for kids rather than horses. Two, I'm also on a local school board, small school. And I know that a lot of local schools use, especially the private schools, use these fields, the park fields for all kinds of stuff. Cause they have no facility. So they're, they utilize a lot throughout the year on just small sized stuff for people who do not have the room on their campuses. And lastly, I'm also the vice president of California, I'm sorry, Capital Community Athletics, that we deal exclusively with services for immigrant and youth. And what we have is players who show up to play cricket, to play, obviously they love soccer. Most of our clientele are Afghan immigrants, Syrian or from Iraq. They're stuck in apartments and they need the grass, right? Anything to get out of the apartment. So the Cardinal Oaks player, homeowners, I hear you. I know tons of them go over there. Lights would be great. We'd be interested actually in helping improve that park ourselves. So we would be a decent partner, I think, to help there. But there's, I think the basic, I mean, can we get a grass plan where we agree that if we plant grass, we want to water the grass. And if we water the grass, we want to mow the grass. And we want to do things to keep just the grass, the grass. So just go away. Anyway, sorry, that's, that's.
I, I, I get all, I get all excited when the turf guys, and when you start talking turf. I mean, I was a parks manager for the last 10 years before my 20 years of recreation. So yes, there was a turf plan. It was going to be hiring a, a parks tech. It was going to be investing about a hundred thousand dollars, probably less than that into a aerator, which we do not own, a top dresser. And then the materials that we would need to be able to do proper turf maintenance and irrigation. It did get crushed by COVID. It is still on the radar. It is still on the radar. In fact, I just saw the most recent budget request that went in and everything that was on there last year is on there this year. Our finances have not changed, we're just trying to balance the budget at this point. But do know as long as I'm here, that I will be pushing for a turf plan, because not only was I a Parks Manager, I have a daughter who played high school soccer and I looked at that field and I agree with you 100%. And once again, I get my hats off to the staff to even keep what's green, green with the money and resources they've had. So, but do know that is, that is, that is there and there was a plan to upgrade that because of the conditions that I saw, not just on the soccer fields, the baseball fields need upgrades and we're doing little things that we can afford, but but we, we hear you. And I would, once again, when I say to the other people, get to the website, get my email, shoot me an email, let you and I talk.
Alright. Alright, thank you. Again, it was, I think the most exciting thing on the whole night was the dead plan, or the, the plan on life support, sorry.
It'll come back, it will come back.
Alright, I'm gone, thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Okay, next Benjamin Wall. Unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I want to just talk generally about two topics and I appreciate having the opportunity to do so. I grew up, many years ago, I went to El Camino High School and I, I learned how to play tennis at Carmichael Park. And I valued those courts. There was a couple summers in my high school years where I would, I would spend as much time as possible playing tennis at Carmichael Park. So my tennis game has progressed pretty well and I belong to a private club now. And I suggested one time to a friend of mine at my, at the private club, that we go over to Carmichael Park and he said, absolutely not. And I said, well, why not? And he said, well, the courts are too slippery, they're too fast, they're too slick. And I guess I have a question. When's the last time the courts were actually resurfaced at Carmichael Park? Do we know that?
Unfortunately, in the limited time I've been here, I do not know the answers the last time. I will say this though. It was a discussion topic, it was once again in the budget to resurface those tennis courts and possibly relamp them with some LED lights. I'm not going to blame COVID for everything in the world, but I'm going to tell you, I mean, when we had to cut down the budget just to make the balance, just to balance it. But, but do know this. It is, I keep saying it's on the radar, it's a lot of things on the radar, what we can afford. We know, and those courts are right outside my window. I see them every, I see them used every day. I see the first court you walk on gets the most use and it's in the worst shape and then if you move around, it's better. So I get, I, I see them getting used.
So I'm not here to criticize, only to, to give my input, which is because the courts are already there and they, they have, and I personally have, I think they're so potentially valuable to to people like me who are growing up in the area and learning to play and wanting to play at a reasonable price. I think the, my input is, let's maintain those courts and upgrade them so that we can be proud of those courts. So I would hopefully put that as a high priority in the, in the planning for the future. And then one side comment, because as a tennis player who has not yet tried to cross over to the dark side of pickleball yet, I would just suggest that you don't put any lines of pickleball lines on a tennis court, because that just becomes impossible to play tennis. You don't know which line you're looking at. So my suggestion as a compromise is if, depending upon the utilization of tennis courts is, is to segregate a couple of the courts maybe for pickleball use and convert them and because you can put as many as four pickleball courts on a, on a tennis court is, or at least three.
Three, three, yeah.
That's my suggestion, don't mix and match, that's just the worst, that's just my input. And then I would, on a second subject, it's been covered a little bit and I'm really glad. I, I also live near Cardinal Oaks, which is one of my reasons I joined the call here and I appreciate that others have brought it up, because I'm, I would just want to say, don't overlook the smaller community parks, which lately have become, you know, as it's been mentioned, used. The amount of usage, the last couple of years, it's been astronomical growth. I just can't even tell you how many more people are coming to that park. And we border that park, our fence borders that, and we've had numerous times where people are banging soccer balls practicing and they happen to hit our fence and have actually damaged some of our fence. And we've actually, I hate to say this, but to try to encourage people to play further away from our fence, if a ball comes over, we sort of keep the ball. We don't want to return it because we're trying to discourage people.
I, I don't want to hear that.
Yeah, so okay, I don't want to say it, I don't want, I don't even want to say it, but the point is, we, there's, it's just a problem that, so and a related comment is, so if you're talking about master planning and master planning, we know that soccer and fields are an important thing. So having said that, it's sort of a not in my backyard thing, I don't want them in my backyard, but I know there's a need for soccer fields and, and whatnot. So there's a, we also related to Cardinal Oaks. Most of soccer playing is on what's, if you know, it's near the playground area and sort of the, the eastern side of the park. And the reason I'm told that, even though it's not necessarily the optimal place to play, it's because the, the grass is generally drier in that area of the park, in the morning especially. And then because the other side, the west side of the park, which is sort of a, it seems more conducive to being away from the playground and being away from the fences. It seems like that would be more conducive to playing a lot of athletic events on those, that side of the park. We're told that it's wet and soggy most of the time in the morning, so they can't play there. So I know, I don't know if any of this is making too much sense, but, but there's a need for soccer, there's a need for fields and there's a need to, I guess, upgrade the community, the small community park, which Christine was referring to, Cardinal Oaks. I don't have any specific suggestions, I'm just giving you some input.
No, we very much appreciate that and the Parks Manager is on the line, so he and I can have a discussion on the water there. I mean, who knows what the dynamics are, but we'll have a discussion and it's a very good point, you'd rather have them there than, you're right. I know the side you're talking about near the playground. I mean, it makes more sense to be on the other side of that pathway.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, next we have Tori Binden.
Yeah, you pronounced it right. Hi, everyone, thank you for doing this, I was really happy to be included. I am a parent of a child who participated and still participates, even though he's an adult now, in Project Lifelong. I also participate as a volunteer. I wanted to echo some of the comments from David Rankin and Justin Kennedy that, you know, the best bang for your buck is, you know, a skate park, not like the big bowls, the concrete, all of those, you know, million dollar projects. These projects can be done very effectively, like they already are being done by Project Lifelong on certain sites for skate nights. Just really quick personal note, the skateboarding, I was a skateboarder, my husband was a skateboarder, he's a retired pro snowboarder. Our child started skating at four years old. And this pandemic has affected everyone, as we know. However, I think it's affected our youth beyond anything we can comprehend. And skating has saved my child's life and I know that most of the parents on here that have kids who skateboard or bike or scooter or do anything outdoors, that that has been their outlet. And I think that it's really important to focus on, you know, every sport, but that skateboarding and scooters and then the BMX stuff, all these fringe sports have not gotten the attention that they need. And they can be done very effectively, very cheaply in a master plan. It doesn't have to be a grandiose endeavor. So I really want that to be given consideration, because it does, it saves and changes children's lives and adults. And I really want that to, to be known. It literally saved my kid and I know it's, he's not the only one. It's a unique sport, I know, but it's grown a lot in popularity and I'd just like to make sure that it stays part of the master plan and actually makes it further up the list.
We appreciate that and thank you and you're right about the outlets. These kids, they, they need it and it isn't just, like I said, I have a soccer player, but it's the other things, it's the bicycles, it's the skate parks, it's a skateboarding, it's, it's all of those things. So we, we know it and we appreciate and we're, we heard skate parks a lot tonight, so thanks.
Who's up next? Thank you, Tori.
That's our last hand that was raised.
Oh my goodness, oh my goodness. Well, this has been so exciting, all these people, you know, providing, you know, comments and questions and giving us millions of ideas and we still have 55 participants participating. That's amazing. What a committed community.
John would like to speak one more time.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, John.
I apologize for doing this. Hopefully a little humor along with some comments. The skateboarders, Scott and Tony, I'm 70 years old. I just want to tell them that in the 60s, I took a board, put on the skates that I had that were made out of metal and had my arms and my head and my arms bruised a lot. So even though I am pushing the pickleball, I will tell you I appreciate skateboarding, period, alright? So let's not have a skateboarder pickleboard thing going on here.
There won't be, don't worry about it. No. I don't want, I don't want skateboarders on the pickleball courts and I don't want the pickleball players on the skate park.
No, but I'm saying, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't understand that aspect of, the skateboarding is fantastic, but yet somehow it seemed like this Scott was saying, yo, pickleboarder is Jesus, you know, you don't understand the importance of skateboarding or something. So anyhow, anyhow, that's old news. Justin, he's right with the soccer and all that. My son is 30 years old. I started with being a soccer coach when he was five years old. I knew nothing about soccer and it's, it is a fantastic sport and all those types of sports you run around. And I agree with him, the fields and whatnot, and I want to tell you, I forget, your, your name, Dave, I think. I'm a plant pathologist, if you need help with.
Well, I, I'm Mike, but Dave's, Dave's close enough, I'm Mike.
I'm Mike, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm willing to, you know, help with the upkeep of this. I'm retired now, you know, so I do have some knowledge about types of things that need to be done. I worked with Department of Test site regulation and I was very much into irrigation and I knew what we had to do to keep pesticides out of groundwater and whatnot. So if you need that help, I am here to offer it.
Well, you're going to get ahold of me next week to talk about pickleball and then I'm going to sign you up to do a lot more, how's that?
Sounds great, I'm, I'm, I'm a 100%. But my last point's very, my, my last point is very important and it's upsetting, I'm sure. I do a lot of statistics and whatnot as a scientist. You only have 100 people here. Dave just sent me, there's 64,000 people here. You're saying that this survey is going to be the main thing that pushes your view of what the plan is going to be. 100 people out of 64,000 people is not exactly a great percentage of representatives of what actually the people want to have happen. I'm just going to bring that up, I am not going to say anything more about it, but just, I guess I would say, how can you rationalize decisions being made on such a small representation of the total population?
Linda, do I, do you want to chime in on that? I mean, a little bit.
We're using multiple things, like we had an online survey, we had 700 people participating in that. Tonight we had, I don't know, 150 people participate. We have to operate under the assumption that, that they represent the profile of the Carmichael population. So that, you know, so you're, you are in a sense representing other people in Carmichael who are your friends and neighbors who have that viewpoint. And it's, it's a pretty good, it tends to be a good way to move forward, because we're going out to the whole population, we're trying to encourage people to input. And so when you do a survey, you do it sort of statistically, you don't have to do the whole population, you just do a segment and then that, you know, you get the same response when you keep interviewing more and more people. It kind of builds on itself. But the more people that participate, obviously the more insights we get. We clearly built a huge list of volunteers off of this meeting, which is fantastic, so, you know.
And you can still comment on the website, so I'm seeing a lot of, you know, are the survey results available? They will be on the website by Monday and so you can go on the website, you can review the survey results and you can provide comments. There's a comment box. I believe Mike's email is on there as well as ours, so you can still continue to participate.
And actually have other people participate too.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and Melanie, did, the, the survey with the 730 people, did we, that was, that's posted on the CarmichaelParkPlan.com, right?
I don't think, it will be Monday.
Okay.
If we can, but I don't.
Yeah, no. I get it, so yes.
Share this meeting as well, so if you, someone, you can direct them to the website and they can listen to all of this beautiful Q and A. But I have one person with their hand raised that's been waiting for 30 minutes that we missed, so hopefully I want Sean to. It's finally your turn, Sean.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, I know it's nine o'clock, my dinner's getting cold too, I'll do my best. First off, I want to say, I'm, I'm super grateful for, for, you know, at least, you know, being reached out to and being able to represent our community and being heard and having the chance to talk about this. And Mike, I want to reiterate that, I, I, you know, it is a process, it is a process and I don't think, you know, as far as the funding sources, I know there's a lot of comparisons to Mission Oaks Park and Rec. Quite frankly, there's, we're different districts, so I just want to say that, I, you know, thank you for saying that and I hope that people do understand that. I am grateful to hear that the skate park is still going to be on the master plan and I wanted to talk a little bit deeper about that. I don't know if everybody knows this, but skateboarding was going to make its debut in the Olympics this year. That would not happen if it was not a sport, not just an activity, not just a hobby, but a sport. In fact, over 12 million United States children participate in skateboarding. I put out a survey to almost 100 students a few years ago and 40% of them reported that they say they skateboard. Now, to be honest, I don't think that's true, but it's kind of exciting that like 40% of the kids want to be seen or have an identity that exists with skateboarding. I'm really happy that Tori hopped on and brought up her teenage son, who I was actually really, really lucky to work with. Teenage programming seems to be a huge, huge thing that is a topic of conversation, not just with Carmichael Parks and Rec, but with recreation across Sacramento County and elsewhere really. And at the forefront of that, you know, you see a lot of these traditional sports that, that are, you know, that people can, or our youth are able to have access to via high school sports or via our facilities. And when it comes to non-traditional sports such as skateboarding, our kids, you know, they, they aren't seeing their identity matched by their community. And I think that's a really important thing to think about. Our kids, you know, in my opinion, are the highest risk population, especially our teenagers in our community. So it's really important that we answer what they are looking for. As far as that, and I hear there's a lot of talk about the surveys that went out and I'm really interested to know how many of our, not just teenagers, but youth were out those 730 people. And I'm happy to help lead an effort and, you know, I know a lot of teachers, we have Samhain Unified, I'm sure there's Samhain Unified teachers in this call right now that can distribute this. But I think having a teenage voice is really important and it sounds like a lot of people are coming from, you know, not just, you know, one dimension, but as far as one dimensional thinking, but they're really, we're talking about families here in Carmichael too. I wanted to speak on what David had said earlier as well. You know, they put in a 7,000 foot square foot skate park at McClatchy Park over in Oak Park. Quite roughly, it's about $10,000 to put in, excuse me, it's about less than half a million dollars to put in a 10,000 foot square foot skate park. And they were able to put in a skate park that's only 7,000 square foot and it is plenty big for people to enjoy and it would be plenty big for Carmichael as well. I think it's really important, like you say, we're looking at. Um, I think it's really important, like you say, we're looking at these numbers for these bigger costs. And I think there are solutions to doing that. Um, I also wanted to comment as far as, uh, what Brenda had said earlier, too. I hope Brenda's still on the call. Um, it was really, really special what she had said about how we need to get more community partnerships involved with our parks. And especially if we're in a situation where we're having an issue finding funding to please, and I think there should be pickleball courts everywhere. I think there should be a pump track. I think there should be skate parks. Um, it seems at the root of all these issues that funding is an issue. And I think that, you know, building community partnerships is, is really important to put at the middle of that. Um, so I'm, I'm hoping that we're looking for solutions as well, um, not just waiting for the next master plan to, you know, to go through five to 10 years later. Because, um, I mean, there's hundreds of kids that would benefit from programming in that time while we're waiting for the master plan to go through.
Thank you, Sean. I, I appreciate what, what you had to say. And, and, yeah, we, we heard it and, and, it was funny, I go back, I, I go, I go back to the beginning of my career in Santa Cruz and working with Zach Wormhouse's dad to design skateboard parks. And, uh, it's, uh, that was, that was in the nineties and now we're 2021 and it's still there. So, you know, we appreciate it. And it's probably stronger than ever.
Can you, can you still hear me?
Yeah.
I still, I, I wanted to make one last comment about that. I, I think what you guys are doing with the DART program, uh, as it relates to providing swim lessons to kids is, is a really good solution. And I heard Project Lifelong mentioned a lot tonight. Um, Project Lifelong can be the DART for the skateboarding. It really can. Um, it's a community partnership group. It's partnered with Parks and Rec in general. Um, and it's, it's willing to absorb the liability. Um, it's a nonprofit that is willing to do that. Um, we just need to find a way to partner with, with our Parks and Rec and provide skateboarding, you know, while we're waiting for the master plan skate park to get put in. So.
And Sean, I did, I took down the website, so I'm, I'm going to try to hit that next week when I'm back in the office and, and check it out some more. So thank you for that. Whoever put it on, whoever put it on there. I probably, I think it was Bob, I mean, it was Bob. I don't, um, where was I? Yes, it was Bob. Thank you, Bob, for the website.
I appreciate that a lot, Mike. Um, I'm going to reach out to you as email as well and hit up that website in, in two weeks when I, when I launch the brand new one. Um, and I will reach out to you. I'm happy to talk to you about it.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Good. Thank you. Thanks for staying on.
Fantastic. I think, I think we've got a lot of solution oriented ideas tonight, Mike. This is really, really great. I feel like we had a real town hall where people not only brought their issues, but brought ideas for how to solve it. I think it's fantastic, you know, because that's sort of.
I did not, I, I thought you were doing all, you guys were doing all the talking tonight, not me. How did that happen? And next time, by the way, when we have panelists, we make sure that Ingrid and James are here on it. And that, that's on me because they can answer some of these, too.
Well, I think it was great. So we still have 44 people on the call. Is there anybody else who would like to raise their hand and get a comment? Or, um, once again, you don't have to do it here. You can still go to the website, send us emails, you know? We, obviously, we're interested in everything you have to say because that's how we solve things here. So, um.
And, and we are keeping a log of the, like I said, saving the chat and the question and answer. So we will go through and we have all your comments and questions and, and make sure all that information.
Yep.
It's to, to Mike and his team as well as to the master plan program or planning.
So if anybody has any comments or bringing questions that they need to come up on the chat box or something, otherwise, I'm going to let you guys go all eat your cold dinners.
Yeah. And thank you for everybody. Thank you for Gates, Linda, Kelly, Melanie. Thank you for hosting this. Thank you for everybody who came out and gave us your thoughts. And it will only help in the long run, um, to make Carmichael, uh, uh, parks even a better place. So thank you. And, uh, you all can find my email. I got a funny feeling I'm going to come back to the office on Monday. There would be like 45 emails waiting for me. So, but I'm there. I'll answer them.
Good. That's good. It's what we want. This is what we want.
Awesome.
Thank you.
So here's, here's the email if you guys didn't get it.
Yeah.
Be tuned.
Yeah. All right, everybody.
Kelly, can we stand for two seconds once everyone?
Is there a secret conversation going on?
I just want to make sure I save everything.
Yes, please.
Please don't.
Don't shut down before you all the stuff.
No, 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 right, right. I don't, ah.
Yeah, no, yeah.
You know, lose it all. So I don't want to do that.
I, and I did tell Susan Skinner that, that this will be posted because I know she wants to, she, she might be doing a follow-up article or something. So I told her and, and once that is, and then I will forward her comments to you that she had made about Jam Park.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Thanks, everyone.
Good evening.
Have a nice evening. Yep.